Doing a good job. We're up and running? Okay, let's go ahead and call the commission to order. Minutes for reports received and filed? None? Liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events?
We got MMRPC tomorrow, the TAC and the Board of Directors. And then that Vietnam Moving Wall Ceremony is Thursday at noon. And we have Leadership Friday, and a bid opening on Friday. That's all I got.
The East Side Business Association BBQ Wednesday night. If you want tickets, let me know. HBA Golf Tournament Thursday afternoon, so don't call me. I don't want to answer it, you can call today. That's about it.
Yeah, we got Jeff City Public School Foundation day list tonight. Wednesday morning, meet with MoDOT over on Highway 50 beautification. The Vietnam Wall, I'm gonna read from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. USS Jefferson City cruise coming in Thursday. Elias Homecoming Parade Friday night. Saturday's Old Munichberg Oktoberfest in Angel Colusa. Sunday's St. Martin's Fall Supper. And the, there's a reception to the USS Jefferson City out of Memorial Park at 4:30. And Monday, the close of the Vietnam Wall at 3:00 p.m. I'm supposed to participate in that, too, so.
So Monday's the close of it?
Yeah, Monday at 3:00.
So it goes from Thursday to Monday?
Yes. And that's all I got.
What was that on the MoDOT beautification on Business 50?
It's, uh... Has to do with the lighting here. They're gonna, they're gonna show us these lights. I guess they came in, so it's... They just want us to see them now that they're here. This week before. It's gonna be on the Jackson Street Bridge. If you can come over, we're gonna do it at Miller Parking Lot.
I just wondered if they're $2,000 lights or they're a $100 light?
They're expensive lights.
And so used our money. Maybe we should've been included in that.
Appointments by commission, Cole County Care Leave Appointments to Committee?
Okay, I had one vacancy due to employee leaving. So these are the appointments and the dates. So I just need you to approve, best present for the Care Leave Committee.
Okay.
So you have somebody that wants to fill the spot?
Yes, there was somebody in the Health Department that left and we filled it with somebody in the Health Department. Michael Sapp.
So do we need to appoint Mike then?
Would you like to see this, sir?
No.
And through, I think there was two other ones that were due last month, too. And if you'd reappoint those. See the ones that were in August of 2015?
So I move that we appoint Mike Sapp to the Care Leave Committee and we reappoint Kevin Wieberg and Robin Blevins.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed. Bids and contracts. 2015-41 microfilming?
This was for microfilming for the Circuit Clerk's office and then the Collector's office. We did require that vendors, Beyond V approved, the Missouri approved vendor lists and within the state of Missouri. We received one response back from American Micro. The bid tabulations before you and the recommendation is to award to American Micro.
I don't have any questions. I hate microfilming, so I don't even wanna talk about it. It doesn't go anywhere when I argue about it, so I've said my piece.
I hate spinach, too, but it's...
It's good for you, though. Microfilming's not necessarily good for you.
So... Is the, is the collector covering his cost, or is that in the budget?
I'm paying for it out of my tax management.
Okay. And then what's the total cost to the, for the Circuit Clerk? I see a lot of prices per... I mean...
I'm not sure the amount of work they're gonna have done total.
What you guys promised in the budget this year is $18,000.
That's what I thought.
So if she comes over with more than $18,000, then I'll send it back to her.
So I move that...
Can I send mine up, please?
I seriously have to be right.
So I move that we award the microfilming to American Micro with the Circuit Clerk's amount not to exceed $18,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. 2015-34 Uniform Garment Rentals and Leaks?
These are the uniforms for out at Public Works. We received two responses from Aramark and UniFirst. UniFirst was the low bid. I did call references and they came back, they came back really good. And Larry, I think you're okay with going with the lowest bid, so the recommendation is for UniFirst.
Is that a different vendor?
Yeah, we've not used them before, but everybody she talked to had nothing but glowing recommendations on them.
I may we award the uniform garments to UniFirst.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2015-35 Matt Mop Tow Rental and Service?
Um, sorry. We received three bids for this. This is for the, all the mats you see around the county. Aramark came in low and that is the recommendation. We have used them before.
I guess they all knew that they were bidding these separate?
They were separate bid numbers, so, yes.
I may we award the Matt Rental to Aramark.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2015-37 Welding and Metal Fabrication?
The welding and metal fabrication for Public Works. We received two bids and the recommendation I would like to give is to the lowest and best with availability.
I may that we award metal and welding and metal fabrication to the lowest and best.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bid Extension Discussion Contract Signing, 2014-24 Janitorial Supplies?
Janitorial Supplies. We had a few items that we changed whenever we initially got rid of Samco and got Hilliard. I added those to the form in the back. The only increase we saw was on the laundry detergent because we indicated that we would use, I think, 21 barrels. And we didn't, we only used eight out of the 21. So I think it's a lot to do with because it's more concentrated. Anyway, all told, the difference between the price of all three types was $36.88. So we're talking a couple hundred dollars a year. I'd like to extend this contract for one additional year.
Who was that with, Jennifer?
Our, yeah, Hilliard.
Hilliard. So I move that we use the one-year extension with Hilliard for janitorial supplies.
All in favor?
Aye.
2014-32 Unarmed Security Guards?
Uh, this is the unarmed, unarmed security guard service. We're at the courthouse. Whenever I bitted out last year, we had them put forth pricing for three years. They were the lowest for three years, so this is just the, the first extension from that original contract with Securitas. And Donnie's happy with them. I checked with him before I went anywhere with this.
I move we sign the one-year extension with Securitas for security guards.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Signing of the 2015-2016 Mustang JAG Grant Award?
Okay, we were awarded $8,767.26 for the Mustang JAG Grant. And that's split out four different ways between the different agencies. And it's just $20,000 for each agency. And that will go towards their salary each year against us.
Still money that we're not paying.
Oh, yeah, you're paying it. Federal tax dollars, buddy. Or state tax dollars. Well, that's good. So I may we sign the 2015-16 Mustang JAG Grant Award contract.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you give us enough to House Craig?
Good, he's out of the cap, right?
Okay. Okay, he's still, how long will he be at Cap Region? Okay. Signing of Recorder's Agreement with Computer Information Concepts, Inc.
Well, he took them back with him. He was gonna bring them today, so.
Let's just skip it. Move on to something else.
It's attached.
I wasn't sure what this was.
Emailed last week and trying to crack my brain, what it was exactly. That's not what's attached. Debbie, is that what's attached to the minute or to the agenda?
Is that attached? I'm not sure.
Is that all we need?
Just to sign the agreement. If you have any questions about it, I think Jill's reviewed it. If I'm not exactly sure where, I think he's painted out the recorder's fund.
Yeah, that's what I was, I don't remember.
By the email.
This isn't one that Dale pays out of...
Oh, this is that software, I'm sorry. It went from like $8,000 to, I don't know, I think this agreement is $12,000.
So it's not budgeted?
It is budgeted, it's under $8,000. Whether Dale has any additional money, which I think he will because we didn't pay the software for new walls.
What Ralph told me is that they've added on electronic recording. And that's why the price has increased. But he's, he's obviously better suited to explain it.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we come back to that? You wanna do the signing of the Contractor Agreement for CCHD Diabetic Educators?
We have, this is our standard agreement. We sign with these two ladies every year. They come in and teach the diabetic education classes for us. They have to be certified to teach those classes. So we just do it as needed when we have a group of individuals that qualify for the class. So it's our standard agreement with them.
Who's that with, Kristi? Individuals, or?
Yeah, Martha Furman and Leota Mag.
Okay.
Two nurses here in town.
I may we sign the agreement with Martha Furman and Leota Mag for diabetic education.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You wanna see that?
No.
Okay. Okay. We're wait for Ralph. We'll go to New Business Accounts Payable Review?
I'd ask for a group of accounts payable and...
Is this just some utilities, Debbie?
No, this is the bigger one.
I may that we approve accounts payable.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's fine.
Okay. Mike Sapp to present abatement hearing, 201, 508-001. Arlie D. Brown, 3116 Roddeman Lane, Jefferson City.
Okay, this is on 3116 Roddeman Lane. Violations present are solid waste. This is a private lane off of Frog Hollow. The property owner has not been maintaining the property. The current violations are weeds in excess of 12 inches, items which hold stagnant water, unlicensed vehicles. And the structure is open on the basement level while animals to enter. All violations are still present. We published notice via the News Tribune, 826 through 99, 2015. All violations still present. No owner has contacted the county health department. And I recommend the county abate the violations following the photos of the property. It is completely overgrown. Like to take the vegetation down around the property. Vehicles, tires, everything in the backyard. This has no motor, no windows. They have cut down the grass in the front yard, but that's about it. It's still over 12 inches in height. So I recommend that all remain violations, or all the violations be abated by the county. To remove the solid waste, secure the building so that no longer a rat harbridge, a potential rat harbridge. Remove all items which may hold water and coordinate with the sheriff's office to remove the unlicensed vehicles.
Is that house vacant?
It is vacant. And... The owners, the mail was overflowing out of the mailbox, no forwarding address. The neighbors out there say he is around town someplace, but they've tried to purchase the property from him, no avail. And don't know how to contact him. They just see him out there on occasion. This isn't the first time they've dealt with it. This is the worst it's ever been, but...
So is it, is this the Arthur Brown and that bunch, or is it a different Brown?
It's Arlie, Arlie D. Brown. I have no idea.
Okay. They just own one property there?
I talked to him about four years ago on the phone. And... I don't have the current phone number or anything.
So this is the only address we have for him, is this?
Yeah, that's the reason I went ahead and advertised in the newspaper.
Where's the tax bill go?
Uh, to the, that's the address of record, is the 3116 Roddeman Lane.
Okay. I may that we abate the 3116 Roddeman Lane, Arlie Brown Residence.
Second.
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, we got you and Kristy here. Why don't we go ahead? We'll just skip around. CCHD Environmental Staffing? Just get you, get you in and out of here and...
Okay. I just wanna have a little conversation about the staffing at the Health Department in the, kinda an environmental section. I don't know if you guys remember, in 2013, I think Rachel Hahn was in the position. Before that, it was Patrick Joyce and they were our emergency planner slash EPI. And when Rachel left, Marie took those, the duties of that position and she split it. And she gave the EPI duties to Jamie Young. And she took the emergency planning duties and gave them to Ian Sexton at the time. So his position was to be split 35% or 40% environmental and 60% to 65% emergency planning. So I've been kinda watching it since I started there. I was, I'm not sure why she did that, why. I have my personal opinion, but I'm not sure why she did it. But basically, if you look at our numbers, it's on the third page of this, on how many inspections and stuff we're doing. It's too much work for 1.3 FTE is basically what we have. With one person who does straight environmental and one person whose duties are split, it's too much for that 1.3. I did a little manpower needs assessment that FDA has where you figure in the total number of hours the departments open each year. How many hours are, you know, holidays and things like that? And then how many inspections you do, how many hours it takes in your road, your drive time and things like that. And it indicates that we should have two FTE to do the number of inspections that we do. So with that person being split, if they spend 65% of their time on emergency planning, we can't get all the environmental work done. And I feel like we need to spend more time educating our food establishment owners. We need to spend more time working with the onsite sewage installers. We need to offer more education. We need to spend more time onsite. And we can't do that with that position split. And then staff from SEMA came to see us two weeks ago and said that we are responsible for developing a point of distribution, you know, pod plan. Basically how we would max vaccinate, vaccinate every person in our county, so that's 76,000 people. So we have to develop closed pod and open pod structures. So places like Truman Building, we would have to make them a closed pod so everyone there could receive the medications for them and their family. And the plans have to be so detailed as to, we have to write an MOU with that facility down to where if we would bring the tables or if they provide the tables. So I mean, that's a huge project for our emergency planner to undertake. And I don't feel like they're gonna be able to do it with a split position the way it is. So I would, I'm proposing that we create a new position that would be an environmental supervisor. It would also help because it would give my, the inspector, someone, a lead person to go to if they have a really complex issue, food establishment, childcare, whatever it is. Instead of always having to jump straight to the director, they would have a, a lead person who was more experienced, that they could bounce ideas off of. Or they could accompany them on inspections and help out with things. It would also reduce the amount of people that directly report to me, 'cause right now I have nine. And they would be in the field, you know, be able to do that stuff. And it would also create, you know, a succession planning career ladder for some of my environmental staff. 'Cause you know that right now, they don't have anywhere to move up to. So... Like I said, I've been thinking about it for some time, but given the recent issues we've been having, I think it's...
Yeah, we've been keeping you busy.
Well, and you can see how one complex food establishment, you know, shutting down that Russell Drive-In took all of Chris's time, almost, except for the sewage issue we had going on the whole week. And that person could also help out with being PIO for environmental issues because at the time I was consumed with another issue. We had that grant thing going on, then we had the sewage thing going on there, we had the drive-in. You know, to stop and talk to the media about the food, you know, it took time away from Chris's schedule. So having another person that could help out with those things would be good.
So are you recommending that we have a person in the Health Department that would do this? Or a person for the whole county that would do this?
Would, I recommend a person in the Health Department that would be the environmental supervisor for code enforcement and my environmental person and my environment person slash emergency planning.
So you work with SEMA, too, on epidemics?
That's what our, our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant pays 65% of Chris's salary. And that's what he's supposed to do, is do public health emergency planning. Now, of course, that person, when, you know, Ian and Chris, when Ian was here and then now Chris, works with Bill because, you know, he takes care of the emergency management side and we take care of the public health side.
So do you have this request in the budget for next year? Or is that, you're just kinda preparing us, or you're wanting to hire somebody now, or what?
I would love to hire somebody now, but if I have to wait till January, I could wait till January. But I think that the sooner the better.
Well, you're down two, right, Ian and then?
Well, we refilled Ian's.
Okay.
No, not really. Chris kinda took Ian's position over 'cause he took the emergency planning over. And then we kinda refilled Brandon's as, or Chris's as Brandon, if that makes sense.
Do we have one of these charts for Bill?
I brought mine along. He wanted to see it.
Okay, I thought we had added our budget, but...
So SEMA told us that we need to do this.
Right.
So they got any money with it?
That's that 65% of Chris's salary.
Got any more money with it? I mean, I'd look at it for next year, but I just can't do anything right now. More mandates from government that are unfunded and... I think we already funded enough.
Yeah, I think Kristy does a good job, though, with...
No, I'm not saying that she doesn't, I just...
No, I'm just, um... I, I don't know if this is just... What, what future's gonna be like, that we're gonna be kept like that, or this is just kind of a window here when, when everything goes. But, um...
I think the emergency planning stuff's gonna continue to grow with Ebola and things like that. They're gonna continue to, um, want the county level to do more. And because we have the state offices here in Cole County who are probably held to a different standard and have a different level of expectation.
You're always monitoring travelers, too, aren't you?
I mean, I agree that we need to be prepared for emergencies, but you can't plan for everything that will happen. It's, that's impossible. So, you know, it's, uh... You just have to be able to adapt and when things happen and get them done, so... I don't know, I, I would look at it for next year, but that's just me, so if you guys wanna do that.
I've said that to all the other elected officials.
Yeah, that's what we told Ralph, too.
I think we gotta treat ourselves the same way, so.
Maybe figure it in your budget.
Can you email me the organizational chart and then kinda what you're proposing, too?
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks for everything you've done, Kristy, too.
Do you get this, or is Mike getting it? You gotta make copies of it.
Before I lose it?
'Cause I'm putting stuff in the budget books and it might be awesome.
Okay, we still don't have Ralph here.
I have one more.
Oh, okay.
It's just two original contracts, and it's for $11,000. It did go off a part of it, so maybe Judy said she could answer any of your questions.
We're back to the recorders?
Yeah.
It's also shiny.
We picked up e-recording. They have listed our e-recording. And we also had to do a special accommodation for the treasurer's office, so we picked up some extra support on some programming there. And then we did an extra report for the reporter's office, too. So we did pick up, they really did take our prices. This is the first time it's been on, so we've got additional costs. And this is the software that runs the whole recorder's office? That's the records management system software?
So you really gotta have it?
Yeah. If you want property better.
I don't doubt that we have... I don't doubt that we have to have it, but I mean, I just wanna know, you know, if we have so much budgeted in the budget, where's the extra amount gonna come from? Is it gonna be, is this paid through, for through G, or IT?
It's always been paid for out of IT.
Dale gonna have enough in IT to cover it, or?
He should.
Well, and what he had budgeted was what we paid to get it for. That was around the eighty-nine hundred or nine thousand more. Or so, we're up to eleven, eleven one ninety-five. Eleven one. So again, he saved money with New World March doing that maintenance. So just off the top of my head, I'm sure he does have enough. But again, that's up to you guys as far as that goes. We tried to keep all the maintenance together unless it came out of a different fund. You know, so Dale could then keep track, so we could actually get an accounting of what software we have out there countywide. So that's why, that's why it ended up in the case, but let's put it that way.
Nothing ever goes down, does it?
You cut it. Just cut it out. Goes away.
There's Ralph.
You got any questions, Jeff?
How much was it last year?
Eighty-nine hundred or something.
We actually talked them into reducing it last year. I mean, they've always been very good about working with us. And they also reduced it this year. They took twelve hundred dollars off per conversation we had with them.
Do we bid this or is this some?
And maintenance on software is not really, unless we change software, then we'll bid that. And we'll try to, you know, get a bid for going out five years on the maintenance. So once you have the software, you're kinda upholding to them, I guess. I don't know.
Yeah, we've been trying to get away from that, haven't we?
It's just hard to get the updates.
I'll give you the software for free, but it's gonna cost a million dollars a year to maintain it.
I'm not sure how much software has been in the recorder's office. Yes. We had a vendor and she sold her business to this company. So it's basically the same basic software, but she sold it. So we've had it since I've been here. We switched to CIC two thousand and nine.
The history of that company goes back about fifteen years or more.
Yes.
And I don't know how many customers they have. Is this something you guys are gonna look into in the future, bidding that software out? I thought we talked and you said maybe there was someone dropping off of the software. That's why you got hired or something? I don't know.
The software got higher this year. The increase from last year to this year is due to our e-recording. Compared with a new program that do not exist prior to it. As a result of e-recording, I think, you know, as of last month, we had about six hundred e-recordings since January. But because, but our numbers are gonna get bigger and because they're not bigger yet, I, I think they do. So since I didn't know anything about it, I called the guy up and asked, you know, why is this so much larger than it was last year? I didn't know. And he explained. But I think he also used that as an opportunity, used that as a, a good reason to give us that twelve hundred dollar discount. Now, whether or not, you know, put it out for bid, it may not, well, I tell you what. And then you're talking about, are you talking about conversion then?
Well, yeah, you would have to.
If it requires conversion.
I'm just suggesting, since usually we don't keep things that long as far as with the same vendor. But if you're happy and it does what you need it to do and.
So in the past, we did not have e-recording?
No.
So that's, this is new?
I, I don't like to misinform you either, though. The e-recording started about last October, just before. Right about October is when it was actually introduced to the office. It didn't really start taking off until folks started learning about it.
We started supporting it until January of two thousand and fifteen. We actually started e-recording October first, two thousand and fourteen. But they didn't charge us. They were just, we just got set off.
So we're, we're, that's part of the additional cost is the e-recording?
Because of all the information, all the dates we have and the different programs we have, that we need. What makes the recorder's office so unique, doing a, did it and ended up with another company. A conversion creates possibilities of just, you know, nightmares. Not that it can't be done, but it's not something you would wanna do without.
This company, you're satisfied with this company and it did a good job providing?
And they're only a phone call away.
Good service.
If we have problems, they're on it real quick. They had a great turnaround time. They've been very responsive. In fact, if I didn't, I didn't, and working with them, you think they were right here in town, but they're actually in, I guess, Denver, Colorado.
Greeley, Colorado.
So is this a Windows-based system?
I believe, I, I think so, Chris.
And then does any of this have to interact with our current VSNA system?
We did require them to create a new report for us so that we could break down their information better. So that when it goes to the treasurer, it could be received correctly. And they were very responsive to that also.
Way back when we were doing the assessor collector software, we talked about incorporating the recorder into all of that. But this is where we are. We want it separate as far as that goes, except for the personal property side is working with them as I know.
Anything else?
I guess just in the future, let Dale know when any major changes are happening with that maintenance. If something's gonna increase or some kind of new law comes into effect, we've gotta do it. So he's up on the maintenance costs.
Okay.
We're gonna need to increase the budget for it next year to that.
Did you increase it to this?
To the twelve hundred more. Are they gonna reduce the twelve hundred again, or are they gonna leave it at twelve three ninety-five? So if we're going to eleven one ninety-five now, they might as well add that twelve hundred into it for next year.
I think I left it at twelve three ninety-five, because I didn't know they were gonna reduce it to that one hundred.
I think the number that got forward, it did have Dale's input, right? Dale came to my office and got the, I figured that he wanted to.
I think I'd put it in at the twelve three ninety-five. If they can back that twelve hundred off, that's fine. We don't have to go change.
Yeah, talk, talk nice to them and just tell them we're really happy and tell them we want a nice, a nice discount.
I think we could, there are other options out there, but it would be so costly to change it. Unfortunately, we kinda got our hands tied with this one, so.
It would be nice if these, all these agreements would come to February first so that we would know or sometime around our, when our budget year starts, so that we'd.
We do a contract to the end of the year and then see if they'll do one from January one to twelve thirty-one next year, if they wanna redo it.
That's a lot of them, different. They're all on different, I was gonna say, they're all on different cycles and you get kind of into, if you start in January first, we don't have an approved budget at that point, so you would be paying it in December still anyway. You know, the timing of when we approve our budget, it would almost have to be a March first start date.
Why you gotta make it difficult?
It's my job.
Your job is to be difficult? I didn't realize that was in there.
I'm gonna keep my mouth shut, cause we're meeting with her, is there?
Is this thing on?
I mean, that would be ideal. I mean, I don't know if that's possible, but to have those contracts closer to the first of the year and know what those are gonna cost rather than be ten months in a year.
I think I could have that conversation with people in the future.
Anyway, I move that we assign the agreement with Peopleware for the recorder's computer system.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's, we'll skip around again. Final closeout change order for the twenty-fifteen chip seal program. Get you guys out of here too.
Okay, we got a, the chip seal contract with a change order amount of twenty-three thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and two cents. And this was for, we had a portion of Bittersweet that we kinda went to pieces and we had to redo and we double chipped it. And then the city of Taos had some streets put on there, which comes out of their portion of the sales tax. So the final contract amount would be three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Is that what Eric emailed us?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't think I had any questions on it.
Do you wanna approve the change order and close out the project?
Yes.
So I move that we approve the change order one for twenty-three thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars and two cents with Missouri Petroleum Products and close out the chip seal project.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What do we got? City-county GIS co-op agreement?
I believe Bill's got that. It's the agreement for the upgrade of our GIS website to the HTML five. Okay, Jill is having her mind bit, so.
Okay. Let's go to something else.
Okay, then we'll go back to the flag. Discussion of Cole County Flag Ordinance. And now I've got a copy of it, so we kinda know, I think really.
So I just, you know, it seemed like we've had a couple of issues here as of late that come about, you know, day of or whatever. I just was kinda thinking that maybe we oughta just kinda designate certain days or if something's declared, we just need to act, need to figure it out before it happens. And I know it's, this is pretty specific.
Yeah, it really is. It's, yeah, once I saw this, I thought.
But, but there are situations where, you know, we don't have to follow what governor declares or what president declares and.
Nope, that's why we did the ordinance, is because there were times when they were lowering it and we didn't.
You know, I lowered it if the governor's dog dies.
No.
Are there times you're wanting to lower it that we don't have specified on here?
No, I mean, it's just, so we, I mean, without going into specifics, I mean, we just had a couple of issues where, you know, that I can remember, but this last one was pretty cut and dry. But it just seems like it's coming about the day of and, you know. And then it's trying to get all of us to decide, is it gonna be lowered, is it not gonna be lowered? And kinda leaves Greg in limbo a little bit, but, you know, the, the one instance was the soldiers killed in, what was it, Kentucky? And I think the governor declared to fly the flag at half-staff and, of course, some of us disagreed. And so, anyway.
This, we have by order of the governor upon the death of a member of the United States Armed Forces from Missouri, so.
Right.
Yeah.
But, you know, in there it also says that we have the right to do as, as we decide, not necessarily do what, what the governor has instructed.
Kentucky murders, they weren't from Missouri, were they?
No.
Okay. And not yet at half-staff, and I disagree with that because if we're not gonna at half-staff for any time one of our troops is killed, whether it be in combat or murdered on American soil, I think it's a, we're spitting in their face or a slap in the face then. So that's why we kinda did this, because there was times that they were flying at half-staff. That's where I come from on that part of it. If there's a date we wanna add to it, we can do them. Greg probably will go through this and just put all these dates on his calendar and he can have them and make sure the flags are down that day.
And then probably if something does come up, we oughta just get together and.
Well, that, either, either the day before or, you know, I mean, I realize.
So we don't wait till the day of.
Yeah, and then all of a sudden, we're trying to figure out whether we fly them at half-staff or not, so. That's the only thing I was, I mean, you can't anticipate what's gonna happen throughout the year, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree with you. I mean, we're not flying the flags at half-staff for every soldier that gets killed, you know, out of, out of the states or, or wherever. And sometimes I think that we demean what that signif, you know, what that really means by, you know, just flying every, the flag at half-staff for everybody that, you know, that dies or perishes, so.
This is, this is good, so I think, yeah.
Just keep the ordinance sizes down for now?
I think so. Don't you, Jeff?
Yeah, I didn't wanna change ordinance. I just was kinda wanting to have more clarification on, on.
Well, if we can be more cognizant too of whenever he does declare something, that he's always declaring something, so I don't pay attention to him all the time.
We've got by order of the president upon the death of principal figures of the United States government, governor of a state, territory possession, member of the United States Armed Forces, or officials and foreign dignitaries.
It's just pretty broad. I mean, you know, and it, I mean, I agree with Jeff a little bit, you know, I mean, we're gonna fly the flag at half-staff for everybody, every armed forces guy that dies. It's not really that much of an honor, so.
It looks like Pearl Harbor is gonna be our next one. I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
GIS then?
Yep. City-county GIS co-op agreement.
Here's a copy of the signed agreement from the city for the GIS website upgrade to the HTML five version, which will be cross-platform.
Two copies.
And our half is three thousand dollars, which Larry Vincent said he can take out of this budget, so.
You're a nice guy, Larry, I tell you.
Will you lower the GIS staff when I die?
I'm sorry.
So will you lower the flag pass staff when I die?
We'll get you a Christmas ornament.
Three quar, three quarters, maybe. Three quarters.
We'll get you a Christmas ornament this year.
I move we sign the city-county GIS cooperative agreement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discussion of recycling.
So I had this put on there. I've just had several people contact me in regards to various types of recycling outside the city limits, whether that be a curbside recycling or whether that be yard waste, various things. And so I just thought I'd bring it up for discussion. You know, I don't know that we wanna go there, but, you know, as far as yard waste and stuff, you know, people that don't live inside the city limits, we charge. They are charged at the yard waste drop-off site, you know, a fee. And, but, you know, I had a lady contact me about, you know, trying to get allied to maybe have a curbside recycling or whoever that city contract. allied to maybe have a curbside recycling wing or whoever that city contract is with, um, you know, just more of a benefit to, to county residents, but, anyway, I don't know. I know Jeff, you had mentioned something about the yard waste at one point, but I just told her I'd, I'd discuss it with the two of you, so.
Yard waste was brought up at one point, but never was. Um, pushed too hard or didn't have that many people contact me about it. We can take it to the city, they will get charged, um, you know, that's one of the amenities of living inside the city limits is you have access to that kind of stuff, so. I don't think we have that much of it out there, that much of a, a need for it, and it's, I'm sure it's pretty costly, so I haven't really even looked at it too much, or even thought about it. As far as the recycling thing, I don't know, does allied, will they bring you a recycling bin if you want it anywhere, or do you have to be inside city limits?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I haven't, I haven't pursued that at all, but, I mean, I'm sure that there's certain subdivisions that, you know, if majority of the people wanted to do it, they may, may be interested, but I don't know if that'd be, there'd be an additional cost or.
I don't know if that's a county government thing for us to.
Right.
Get into, but Wardsville has it, and I had one dropped off my driveway, I'm like, what the hell is this thing in my driveway? I'm going to sit it down behind the garage, I didn't think I'd ever use it. I use it a lot, surprisingly. I recycle a lot more than I really thought I would.
Aluminum cans?
I was going to say, I have a lot of soda bottles.
I just said aluminum cans, I, I could Diet Coke.
It's budget time, Vincent. Settle down, I hear. Yes, Diet Coke cans. You lost my sense of.
So Wardsville does have it?
Yeah.
An allied does that?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yep, they actually, they get a lot of recycling, I think we got a report from it, I don't know when it was, maybe they do it yearly. I got it from Shirley Stockman. There's a, there's a lot of waste that's, you know, kept out of the.
Landfill.
Landfill, so.
Okay.
That's something that Wardsville negotiated then with allied, or, or was it, is Republic Services now, I think?
Allied Waste Republic.
Yeah.
Why do they change their name all the time? You get your name finally.
I mean, does Wardsville have anything to do with it, or do you know, or is it just a service to the, the people that live in Wardsville?
I don't know what they have to do with it, I don't know if they just negotiated the contract or what.
Okay.
Oh, I'd say like, like St. Martin's, some of our other communities, if they want to. Who, who does? Your trash out in Russellville?
Well, I mean, I don't know, in the city limits, but obviously outside the city limits, there are other carriers besides you, because I currently do not have a carrier.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it'd be beneficial, you know, in the high-density areas, it'd be more beneficial for the, for them to do something like that, but, I mean, that's, I'm kind of with Jeff, is, you know, if, if private company wants to do that and charge people for it, I'm good with that, but I don't know that we want to enter into any contract with them to, to do it countywide or anything.
Most of those cities have their own pickup days too, a couple times a year. You know, curb pickup.
Yeah, they do do that too, where you got all the, I don't know.
If we haven't had any requests for it from the county, then let's just kind of wait and see.
I've had people request it, uh, yeah, so, but, um, anyway.
If you want to get rid of some, just sit on the curb and put for sale on there, somebody will steal it. But you put free on there, they won't take it.
It says free, yeah.
They won't take those.
There's one on St. Louis Road Sunday that had free and it was still there, yeah.
Speaking of recycling, have you heard anything on the tires this year?
I don't know if we're going to get one this year or not.
I've had a couple of calls about that, so.
If we want to foot the bill for it, we can, um, I've had a couple of people ask about it, but I don't know if there's been that much interest in it to foot the whole bill for it. We're trying to get it through the Missouri Solid Waste Management District.
So, Senator, from pass, and I just, I didn't know if the council has talked about any future dates yet.
They're talking about doing, they always do one up at MU, and they help pay for that one, and then they usually do one somewhere else, and if nobody else is interested in it, we may be able to swing one, but I think there were a couple of other counties, we serve seven counties, I don't remember if it was Old Drain or, it might have been Montotol or Osage, even one of the neighboring counties that were talking about doing it, and if they don't do it, they won't try to do it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's always a good turnout.
Yeah, we always have good turnout here locally, so.
Yeah, I'm trying to steal it from MU, because how come they get to have one every year? So, but they do the e-waste and the other, uh, no, household.
We did that one year, we had e-waste here at our facility too.
Yeah, and they have to pay to drop off old TVs and stuff like that. The tires, they're going to have to start paying, get rid of those too.
Okay.
Tractor tires, tires with rims, one thing we looked at was taking, if you, if we take them with a rim, we still charge them, but we may be out there, and if we have something to cut the tire off, then we can get rid of them cheaper, because it's, it's fairly expensive to get rid of that stuff. And they frown on you burning them.
Want to do anything on recycling?
Look up the rules, you can do two per year, I always laugh when they say that. No. Everybody says, I'm like, what do you do, start one on fire and somebody stops by? Oh, this is only my second one. Oh, okay, you're fine, and they drive off. No, you call the fire department, they're going to come in and put it out, right? You been burning tires, Sam? You look kind of guilty.
No.
What are you doing back beyond the store? You do it at night?
No, we, we just put everything in the dumpsters. We got, we got dumpsters.
Actually, if you cut them in half, I think, or quarters, you can put them in dumpster now.
There, there's people that are using tires for resurfacing roads and stuff, there's all kinds of stuff they're doing with tires. It was, give all those to Larry and you can.
No. No. We get enough of, we get enough of them, we got to go.
No, there is some experimentation though with, with, I don't know.
Everybody that has kids knows where they experiment with them, in the playground, so you bring them home in your shoes, and your clothes are all dirty, and that's wonderful. You run into that?
Or the kids burn it for you.
Wash it, do it in the washing machine.
Do we have any other issues before we go into closed session?
Are we done already?
We need to talk about this garage door.
Oh, yeah, we do that, and then I also have a request for GIS for, since nineteen eighty-seven, National Geographic and Missouri Geographic Alliance have worked together to promote Geography Awareness Week throughout the state of Missouri. As coordinator of the alliance, I am asking once again this year for your assistance. Our goal for Missouri is to have all of the county commissions and county executives proclaim November fifteenth through the twenty-first as Geography Awareness Week and November eighteenth as Geographic Information Systems Day, GIS Day.
Yeah, that's something that we've done for a little past.
Yeah, we might even have a cake for you or something. But they've actually provided a proclamation and everything that we can just sign and put our seal on the mail back to them.
Yeah, you guys, I think, it's been signed for the last two that I know of years, and it would be great if we could, like, Co-County could report that, sign it, that would be great.
Yeah, and our coordinator for Missouri Geographic Alliance is Shannon White out of Columbia, Missouri, so she's central Missouri.
Yeah, she does some great, great work.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
So we need to, we need to make a motion to do this, right?
Yeah. We're going to have birthday cake for you then, right? GIS Day?
Well, we should probably do something for you guys.
Hats and.
Proclamation.
Yeah.
So we need to have a proclamation written up.
No, they've already, they've already got it, we just signed it and put our counties.
You want to look through this before we do it?
No, I'm fine, I was just wondering if we had the proclamation, because we wanted to put it on it and sign it. They got it wrote up, but do we got to put it on our stuff?
I don't think so. No, I think they just want our county seal and.
Yeah. We'll put it on the agenda for that week for reminders.
Okay. I move that we sign the proclamation for Geography Awareness Week, November fifteenth through twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, and also the proclamation for Geographic Information Systems for November eighteenth.
I'll second.
Two thousand fifteen, there's a typo there.
Okay, so we don't need to put it on the calendar then?
Yeah, you're right, now they got a typo.
We're going to do it now, we don't need to put it on the calendar.
They've got two thousand fourteen, but, uh, yeah, see if she can send us some new ones.
If we vote it, we can, we can sign it once, once we get a new copy or something.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
No, those are supposed to be on the agenda.
The door?
Everything, everything you bring up that's, you know.
Okay.
Can we, can we bring up the doors then?
If it's not on the agenda.
Doors are old business.
Like anything.
GIS is old business, we've done this every year.
I'm old business.
Sorry, Jill. Actually, I mean, is it another issue? What does other issues entail?
That's not a free-for-all to bring up anything under the sun.
I'm trying.
No.
I mean, this is the law.
I just do correspondence, is that okay?
Yes.
Well, this was just correspondence that I'd received.
So.
We can, if you didn't sign it, we can put it on the next.
Yeah, okay.
It's, I'm serious, this is the law.
Okay.
And if you all knowingly break it, that's a five thousand dollar fine.
I didn't knowingly break it. It was old business. So put it back on the agenda for when Debbie was saying we'll do it then.
Do that.
No, you don't have to worry about it. Sam knowingly did it.
Is there any other biz, any?
It was Sam, we're going to put it on you, Sam.
Jeff said it was your fault.
Oh, I'll take, that's, I got brush.
You didn't know either, Sam.
No.
Sam, you didn't know either.
Do we have any other business before we, we go into closed session?
She just said we can't bring anything else up, so, too bad.
Can you rescind that vote that you did?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Make a motion to rescind the vote, so do you need to make that motion since it was your motion?
That's fine, I move that we rescind the vote on the geographic awareness.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I maybe we go into closed session, present to section six, ten, point oh-two-one, sub-three for personnel issues.
Second.
Okay, we need a roll call though, roll call.
Was your kid a what? One?
Yes.
I will.
Jeff, say yes.
He didn't do it, so he didn't thank you.
Yes.
I know, you would have been SOL for over a week. I'd cut, I'd get.